Okay. Welcome, members of the public. We'll bring the meeting of the Park and Recreation Commission to order. Would everyone please stand, mute your microphones for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Giovanna, could you call the roll, please?
On behalf of the Chair, Massey. Commissioner Fields, present. Commissioner Halt.
Here.
Commissioner Home.
Here.
Commissioner Massey.
Here.
Commissioner Walnick.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Some. Bittenhelm, housekeeping first. Due to the physical distancing protocols in place at this time, we continue to encourage public participation remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the top and bottom of the published agenda. There are two ways to participate. Join the Zoom meeting by clicking on the link at the top of the agenda. Use the raise your hand button to be called on at the appropriate time. Please unmute yourself only when called upon. Phone-in participation can be done by calling 408-638-0968 with the conference ID passcode 199648. Press star nine to raise your hand to be called on and star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. Okay. Next item is our consent calendar. The only item there is approval of the minutes of our September 1st, 2021 meeting. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes to propose?
Yes. I do. So I noticed in the public comment, it said there were no comments, but we had a bunch of people from the speedboarding community comment.
Last.
Did that?
I don't think it's the last meeting.
It was two meetings ago.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Apologies about that then.
It was very memorable, though.
Yes. It was quite a few meetings in a row, so maybe I just missed that. And then in the agenda item, the Central Park, there was stroller parking mentioned, but I wanted to, we all are, a couple of us mentioned bike parking as well. So I'd like to add that in there. Um, and I think that's it.
Okay, any objections to the proposed additions?
Make a motion to approve with the proposed additions.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, the.
Chair Massey.
Yes.
I do have to take a roll call vote for this item.
Uh, fair enough. Let's, let's do it.
Thank you. Commissioner Home.
Aye.
Commissioner Halt.
Aye.
Commissioner Fields.
Aye.
Commissioner Walnick.
Aye.
Commissioner Massey.
Aye.
Motion has passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, we offer to any members of the public who are listening and who wish to speak to the commission on an item not on tonight's agenda. This is, this is your opportunity to do so. There is a, an overall time limit of 15 minutes for this public comment section. So we would ask any members of the public who, who wish to bring something up to keep their comments reasonably short. Giovanna, do we have any, any raised hands?
We do. There is one attendee. His name is Richard Hedges.
Okay, well, then let's, let's have him speak.
Thank you, Chair Massey and board members. Really feel great being able to speak to you tonight. You've done a great job. I want to talk to you about one particular program that's very significant for our older citizens here in San Mateo. That's the Get Around Program that is funded partially by the city, but also by money coming from CCG through the Lifeline Funding. That's money that comes out of the state and federal government, passes through MTC, and comes to us. I've been on the scoring panel for a number of years. Our Get Around Program was on the last score, was on the last call for projects and got a very handsome grant. I want to talk to you tonight about expanding that program. One of the the best kept secrets in San Mateo County is this silver tsunami that's pressuring very heavily Ready Wheels. We have the opportunity, I think, to expand our program to the disabled community members here in San Mateo that are under 65. There are a total of 240 that are signed up for Ready Wheels. The Sarah Cab Company, I've spoken with them. They have the resources and the vehicles to do this, and already are carrying people who are disabled to their destinations. So at the last round of, of Call for Projects, it was undersubscribed by 1.6 million. And I've been told that they are, and this was about eight months ago, they are intending to do another Call for Projects. I would suggest that we do a Call for Projects to include these disabled people. It would be simple because Ready Wheels actually determines who's eligible. Not everybody who's disabled is eligible. They have to not be able to ride a bus. So this would alleviate them from riding all over the territory. Oftentimes, Ready Wheels is late, not their own fault. They don't get people to their doctor's appointments on time or pick them up on time because they're so oversubscribed. So I would encourage the board, and I've already spoken to Director Kinsey about this. I'm just so pleased with this program. You've done such a great job. And I think we could do a lot more for people here in the city with the program. And I might add that this program gets, when you subscribe, gets high marks if you are actually helping equity priority communities, which would be a disabled community. And my estimation is would make this program a lot more likely to continue to get funding. So hopefully you'll take my comments in the progressive manner that I mean them and consider this. I think it would be a real win for the city. We would be the only city doing that, and I think we would get accolades not only from disabled community, but from other communities within our county. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for your comments. As, as I'm sure you're aware, the commission, because this item is not on tonight's agenda, the commission can't, cannot respond to it this evening. But we can, and I, and I would like to request staff if, to provide any comments they might have at this time.
So Chair Massey and members of the commission, I have spoken to Rich Hedges about it. You know, I think from a service standpoint, it would be a great addition to our Get Around Program to be able to service individuals who are not seniors, but who still have a transportation problem. The one thing I mentioned to him and that I will be discussing with staff is really the capacity to handle the additional people internally in terms of reviewing applications, sending out the monthly cards that have the number of rides on them, et cetera. So I think there's a potential need for some administrative support. And in talking with Mr. Hedges, he did believe that that kind of request could be built into the grant request the next time it comes around. So I think with that, I will be talking with staff and keeping in touch with Rich about when the next, next round of applications are due. And again, I think it would be a great service to our community. I do think, though, that just based upon the growth of the program over the years with just our senior population, that we are going to be in need of some administrative support.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll be taking it forward then on, on, on that basis. So, Mr. Hedges, thanks. Thank you so much for, for your comments. Giovanna, do we have anyone else?
There is nobody else raising their, their hand, Chair Massey. Thank you.
Okay, well, then, in that case, I will close this public comment period and move us on to the next item on our agenda, which is the non-resident surcharge policy pilot for recreation programs. I understand that we have a presentation, staff has a presentation. Would you please go forward with it?
Sure. Good evening, commissioners. Okay, I hope everybody can see the, can see the presentation.
Yes.
Wonderful. Okay, so tonight, we, 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 staff will provide an update on the resident versus non-resident surcharge policy. We first raised this to the commission in January 2020, a whole year and a half ago. And because of the fact that we have some new commissioners on board, I've taken a minute, and also for the public, I've taken a minute to, to prepare some background, a very short background slide, just to remind everybody about this, about this presentation. So in January 2020, we discussed removing the non-resident surcharge, which would mean that we would forego approximately 1% of revenue in the hope of attracting more non-resident patrons, therefore delivering more patronage and therefore more revenue. By definition, we have, a resident is anybody who resides in the city of San Mateo. And I should clarify that it's only the city of San Mateo. It excludes the county, that's appointment of many people that call in. And they have to be also incorporated because there are parts of, of the city that carry a San Mateo address but aren't incorporated. So we use a GIS tool that basically confirms whether that, that, that address is valid in the city. So if indeed they are a resident, they would enjoy slightly cheaper activity registration fees where possible. They don't, they wouldn't apply the non-resident surcharge to every single activity. For instance, summer camps aren't included as an example. But theoretically, if a Foster City resident tried to register for ceramics, they would pay slightly more than a San Mateo resident. So once again, that's the background. And in January 2020, we discussed removing the non-residence surcharge because we felt that it would attract more people and attracting more people would make, would make us more profitable. Any questions so far? Okay. So the, the, the reasons for having or not having a surcharge is that a non-resident surcharge reflects that residents pay city taxes. Historically, this has been the case. And that non-residents also, the surcharge also contributes somewhat to a, to our revenues. However, the case for not having the resident surcharge is that there are many similar courses on the peninsula that are actually offered by the same contractor or that we outsource a program to. So it is kind of, in some ways, we feel that charging more for the same program as, as Foster City or in comparison to Foster City might actually drive away business because it is the same program and Foster City to San Mateo isn't too far. And I'm only using Foster City as an example. It obviously could be Redwood, Redwood City, Burlingame, any other city on the peninsula. So once again, we just felt that it could be more beneficial to bring in more patronage as opposed to keeping this, this surcharge for a 1% additional revenue. So in, again, in January 2020, we concluded with commencing with a non-resident surcharge pilot, basically doing away with it and removing this. But in lieu of the lower cost for the residents, we would offer them instead priority registration, which in practice means that, for instance, in fall, we had registration commencing August 16th, which was a Monday for residents. And for non-residents, it commenced on Wednesday, so a full 48 hours later to give the local residents the opportunity to register ahead of non-residents, albeit at the same price. Now, 20 months and a pandemic later, of course, what we've seen is that we are doing a fraction of the business that we were unfortunately 20 months ago. We are doing much lower numbers. However, in terms of the actual split between residents and non-residents, what we are seeing is that the non-resident portion has actually creeped up from the 20% that it used to be prior to the, to the pandemic to 24, 26, 28%, representing that although it is a smaller number, we are getting a higher percentage of non-residents signing up for our programs. Furthermore, what we're also seeing is that our local San Mateo residents have actually taken up the priority registration. And one in three of them will, in most cases, register during the advanced priority registration period, which is also a good indicator because it shows that the advanced registration benefit is actually being utilized whilst at the same time, non-residents are actually enrolling in greater percentages, which will hopefully translate to higher numbers once we are in higher revenue, once we are back in the full swing of things. And that day can't come too soon. So the staff recommendation is also that we have looked at the, at most cities on the peninsula. And we have seen that there isn't a definitive, definitive outcome or statement that can tell us that having a non-resident surcharge is better than not having one. We've also seen that the, during the pilot, that we have seen an increase in the percentage of non-resident registrations. And as well as that, we should mention that we've used the term homogeneous in the sense that a lot of cities on the peninsula are using the same contractor to offer the same programming in many cities. So therefore, we're hoping, we believe that by offering great course content, very similar to other cities, that is at a lower price will mean that we will have a higher patronage in, in, in the, in the months to come. Once again, residents have made use of priority registration. And in conclusion, staff feel that the non-resident surcharge should remain removed. That concludes my presentation, and I was wondering whether anybody has any questions.
Yeah, I think we could open it up to questions from the commission at, at this point ahead of public comment. Mr. Walnick, why don't you start?
I, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Commissioner Halt?
Yeah, I have two. One, I'm just curious, as you're kind of looking at, at revenue, are the prices of classes generally somewhat comparative and competitive to other communities as well?
They, they are because our pricing is pretty much a, the way we, the way we do our pricing is that we talk to the contractors and then we come up with a kind of a, they set the price in many, many ways, which they tell us that we want to walk away with this much per class. And then we add a surcharge for the city. Now, in doing so, if, if we, during this negotiation, if we were to charge like, you know, three times more than, you know, than what they would think makes the class attractive, they obviously tell us that, hey, if you, if you, you know, you're going way above market. So therefore, it's not going to attract any, any, any patronage. And of course, you know, the city next door is doing it for this, this amount. So if you want to be competitive, so we do get that feedback from the, from the contractor, because obviously it's to their benefit to get the highest number of patronage for any of the courses that we offer.
Got it. And then the other one, too, I was just curious, did we look at like a foster city model where it was a slight increase of $10, but we still gave priority resident registration as well? Or did the numbers still not play to our favor?
So, so Foster City hasn't, we haven't, we haven't, well, when we, when we looked at the numbers this year around, it's a little bit more difficult to, to look at, to do the comparison because of the fact that, A, we are offering a lot of virtual classes. And therefore, we don't know whether in the year, in, in the, you know, in the year to come or the year after, whether, once we revert to in-person, whether that will swing things. Because when you're doing a virtual class, you know, you will look for the, you know, for the best schedule or, you know, price is only a part of it. But when you're in person, you might make a decision differently. So we, we, we can't conclusively make that statement that that will work better because we're not back to where we were two years ago.
No, that makes sense. Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Commissioner Fields, questions?
Yeah. I guess I just, I, I feel like this pilot, while very well intended, because it was during such a weird time, is only so useful. And I just wonder if, if there's an opportunity to extend the pilot for another, I don't know, year or two before something more final is made. You know, I, I'll just say sort of, the reason why I'm thinking this way is I, I've taken several tennis classes through, through our Parks and Rec system. And I think they're an amazing deal, whether you're a Samitean or, you know, you happen to live in Belmont or San Carlos or something. It's a very good price for tennis instruction, especially it's a four-person class. You know, comparative to a country club or the Bay Club or something like that. I mean, it's an amazing deal. So I, I mean, certainly I, I support the idea of, of priority to the, to Samiteans. I think that's right. But I guess I just wonder that maybe this is a process question, but you know, do we, if we make a decision this evening, does it stick? Or is there a way, is it possible to extend this pilot? Just because I, I just feel like this last year and a half is not, is just not a good example of how people behave.
I personally, I, I think that we'd be open to an extension. I think Sheila might be able to speak to that, you know, to make the decision. We just felt that, with, well, we felt that we, there was the, we hadn't received any negative feedback from the community to basically say that, you know, this isn't working for me. So therefore, we, we didn't hear anything untoward. So that's why we felt that the San Mateo public was happy with this change. I think in the last meeting, Commissioner Home told us that the biggest challenge is to get access to the hottest classes, which was more of a concern than, than the price. So we felt that we, for instance, in this case, we, you know, we, we had enough information to consider removing it. However, I don't think that, I don't think that if, if the commission felt that it should be extended, I don't think staff would object.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think Nicholas had, you know, provided a fairly good response in terms of that. Certainly, if there's an interest in extending it, we certainly could. I think the fact that we saw, have seen even under sort of the duress conditions that we have seen an increase in the number of non-residents percentages who have attended our program. I think the other thing, and I think Nicholas alluded to it, is, is that moving forward, we certainly anticipate trying to return more to in-person program. But I think that what we have found is that there is still a real, I think there will always be a demand for virtual program. And when you're in a virtual program, I'm not sure it makes any difference if you're sitting in a living room in Belmont or in San Mateo or Foster City in terms of, of how much you're paying. So I think we're open either way. I think that the reason that we brought it forward at this time is that we have seen a percentage increase in the, in the number of non-residents who are taking our programs.
Great. Thank you for clarifying. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hall, any questions?
Yeah, one, one sort of a statement and another is a question through, based on a statement or recollection, partially. So one, one of the things I recall when we reviewed this back in 20, early 2020, was that one of the hassles or, or friction points of the resident versus non-resident rate was that there's people in unincorporated San Mateo that don't even realize they're not San Mateo residents, like people in the Highlands that would, that would call. And then it was always, it was almost like it was more, more staff time for you guys to, to handhold that than, than it was worth. Is that, am I remembering that correctly?
We have this issue mostly for, for picnic reservations. That's where we kind of see it more because non-residents can't reserve our facilities. And that seems to be a more of a pain point for the admin thing. For, for the, for, as far as the, let's use this as a tennis class, we haven't received anyone. We've never, well, not to my knowledge, and I'm, I'm, I deal with these phone calls on a daily basis. Have I heard from a Highlands resident that they are aghast or disappointed that, that they have to pay more because of that? That's not, we get, again, we get numerous complaints and we see it in our registration system where people try to game the system in order to get access to the picnics by opening five, six, seven different accounts under different names, testing different residence addresses to get into the picnic system as opposed to registrations. So I don't, I, I can't remember. I kind of have the same recall as yourself, Commissioner. But just from somebody who like deals with the public on a daily basis, I haven't heard that complaint from the.
And is that because the picnics are, are, you can't reserve, you're a non-resident? Is that the deal?
Correct.
Okay. Then my other question is, you know, with this decreased overall enrollment due to COVID, the, see if I'm looking at the right, it's like, is it 73, 7300 total 21, 2021 year to date versus the almost 19,000 in the 2019 pre-COVID? Is, are we fully subscribed to classes? Is it 7300? Is that full enrollment and we're just offering less classes? You know, also considering that so many classes were just shut down for such a period of time? Or are we at, I don't know, 50% possible max enrollment or something to that effect?
Oh, I, I think, and, and Bob can contribute here, but basically what's happened is we haven't offered indoor classes for a very long time due to the fact that you couldn't have indoor classes. So that's the first one. Then we've seen with things like summer camp. For instance, when we started offering summer camps, we, just as soon, just as we started offering it, we started having issue, the, the delta wave came through. So again, we, we've been impacted greatly. Our summer was largely camps. It, it didn't include a lot of our indoor facility, inside facility courses. So I think that, to answer your question, we are not, we are not back to offering a full menu of choices as we did before because of the fact that we just don't have, a lot of the classes can't be done outside. And going into winter, it's going to be more so the case. So therefore, because we're not offering the, the range that we had, we obviously can't have the registrations that we did.
Yeah. Good evening, commissioners. Bob Plasse, Community Services Manager, Commissioner Home, to, to further answer your question. So. So we're, we're around 60%. I think it's important to note that the, the only mandate we have right now for indoor programs is that we have to wear masks while we're indoors. That being said, we do have reduced class sizes. We're still trying to keep people spread out. And, and it's, it's about not only safety, but comfortability of people who are attending our courses. I still don't think people, you know, want to be crammed into a, a max, you know, maxed out class. They're not there yet. So, you know, in addition to have reduced number of classes offered indoors, uh, we also have, um, amounts, you know, or we may have 50% of capacity for a course, uh, in a given space. So that, that's really played into the, you know, why the numbers are down. This fall is the first time that we're sort of getting back to indoor programs in our facilities in a more expanded way. You know, other than, than either distance learning or, or after school, we're actually offering, you know, ceramics and things of that nature. So, um, this is us kind of putting our toe into the water. And I think, um, if people continue to feel comfortable and things head in the right direction with the, of the pandemic as they have been, I think you're going to see our numbers increase. We also budgeted ourselves, um, to have more programs in the spring this year because we thought that, you know, by the springtime, we'd be able to expand indoors, um, more in the way that we had in the past. So that's kind of where we're at.
Okay. So there's no, because I remember part of the thing was, part of the, the idea was that by getting more non-residents, we would just boost overall enrollment that we'd hit. We hit max enrollment essentially before maximum, meaning max, um, max interest. And that by getting more, uh, non-residents, maybe we'd boost overall total enrollment. But it sounds like it's still too early, uh, or too, too, uh, altered COVID state to, to really know if that 26% is going to, versus 21% before is going to translate to more total enrollment.
Correct. Yeah, I think, you know, I think one of the, one of the reasons that we came to you with the recommendation was to, to sort of do away with the, the non-resident, uh, surcharge, was because, you know, we, we were afraid to have, you know, a two and a half year pilot at some point is not a pilot. And so, you know, that's kind of what our thinking was. But we, we definitely agree with, with you that, um, you know, hey, it wasn't the best conditions to run the pilot under. However, we did see a small uptick. And so, you know, we wanted to honor the data and, and kind of move forward with that decision. I, my own personal belief is that I think, um, you know, expanding our reach to outside, you know, folks outside of our city at the same price, uh, is a good thing. I think it doesn't, you know, it doesn't discourage our folks from, um, from taking our courses. You know, there are things like picnics that we have in our system that, that non-residents cannot, you know, they can't rent picnic areas. So there's still benefits, obviously to, to our folks here. Um, I think if we were to ever get into a place where our courses were all full and we were seeing that, uh, residents were, um, you know, on wait lists in large numbers and we were finding that non-residents were taking those spaces, we'd revisit for sure.
Thank you. I guess I'll just, I'll give my comment now. So Commissioner Massey, you don't have to go around. I, uh, I would support either, uh, going with the recommendation or going with Commissioner Field's request to extend it. I'm, I'm fine either way.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, I've got, I've got a, a few things. One of them is, I, I, and this, I might be, um, more for, um, Ms. Kanzie and, and that is, what is the practical difference or, or even the, the, the formal difference between making a decision tonight to keep the existing policy indefinitely and extending the pilot? If we just make a decision to keep this policy indefinitely, are we precluded from changing it in the future? And if, if we're not, is there some, is there some, um, I don't know, adverse consequence to saying this is going to be the policy? And then a year or two from now saying, well, we just decided to revise that?
Yeah, I, I think from an operational standpoint, I don't think that there is any, there is no consequences of continuing under the pilot program. I think that when we came to the commission back in January of 2020, we were hoping to bill it as a one-year pilot program so that we could get some idea of how we were doing. Obviously, um, that didn't work out simply because of the pandemic last year. So, um, I, I don't think from an operational standpoint that there is any downside of, of continuing it under a pilot program. I would, if that's the case, and if that's the commission's desire, I'd like to try and put some cap to it so that we're not just continuing this indefinitely.
Okay, so I, I take it from, from what you're saying that there is some downside to saying this is what we're going to do for the indefinite future until and unless we feel circumstances have changed. In other words, just put the pilot program aside and say, this is, this is what we're doing. I'm, I'm wondering if the, if the, the public's perception of how our program is, is being structured really draws it such a firm distinction between pilot program and just general policy?
You know, I don't think it probably does. I think that, you know, when, when people look at our, um, at the, at our activity guide, they would see two prices. They would see a resident price and a non-resident price. Right now they're only seeing one price. And so I think to Nicholas's earlier comment, you know, we've not received any feedback from the San Mateo public that says, gee, I noticed that you don't charge non-residents anymore. That's, that's not been the case.
Okay. Well, I, I think that's, that's good to know. Okay. Another question I had was, um, which you talked about how right now, at least a number of our programs are virtual and that, um, we're foreseeing a demand, continuing demand for virtual programs going forward. Is it the case with our virtual programs that there's no limit to how many people can sign up for them?
Commissioner, I will, I'll take that one. So there, for certain classes, we do put limits because, um, you know, obviously if it's the instructor, you know, can only get the content out to however many people and at some point it becomes unmanageable. All of our virtual classes will have an instructor and they'll also have a co-host that is letting people in and, and doing that, that type of thing. But the numbers of, of people in a virtual class never really get above 60, which is like sort of the top end of what we would want. But, you know, for certain classes, if they're exercise or things like that, we would, we would continue to extend the cap. So that would, in that case, we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't be worried about how many people were in there. But if it's something that, you know, it's art or things like that, that, um, that require actual sort of interaction between, um, between the, the participant and the instructor, we do put some limits on those programs. The other thing to remember is that there are three sort of versions now of program. There's in-person only, there's hybrid, which is in-person and people that are online, uh, at the same time. And then there's virtual only. So all of those are, are kind of taken differently. Obviously with hybrid, we have to put caps because, um, you know, the instructor can only deal with so many people and so many questions and, and manage all of that still. You know, have, have the content and, and the curriculum of the class, you know, in, in an appropriate way. So hopefully that answers it.
It, it does. What I, what I was mulling was whether there was any, uh, value in taking a different approach for virtual versus in-person classes on the, on the premise that, um, we, we had no limits on how many people we would put in a virtual class, um, as opposed to in-person. But I, it, I think our, our structure is, is a bit more complex than that. And so I'm not sure that approach really, really gets us anywhere except making life difficult. And some of my fellow commissioners may disagree about that. So I, the idea is out there if anyone finds it attractive, but I guess I, I don't, um, on reflection. I guess the one other question I had, what it had to do with the, uh, unincorporated residents. I, I understand it that at least with respect to course registrations is not really a problem. But is there, is there any, uh, benefit to be had in extending the concept of resident, at least for these registrations, to include the, the people who live in these, in these areas like the Highlands that are not officially part of the city of San Mateo, but are with, I think that the term of art is within our sphere of influence. Is, is there any advantage to be had in, in looking at including them in, in the resident umbrella?
You know, I, I, I'm not sure, um, how to approach that. I think that, um, you know, the, the, um, initial reason for having a resident and non-resident was the fact that particularly in the recreation and, and park area, we are heavily subsidized by the general fund. And the general fund comes primarily from tax sources that are generated within the city of San Mateo. And a good portion of that is property tax, but also a good portion of it, or at least it used to be, it was, is sales tax. And so, um, maybe if you look at it very specifically in terms of the sources of revenue, one could make a case that people who live in the non-incorporated areas, but maybe come down to San Mateo for dinner or shop at Hillsdale or whatever, are actually making a contribution, um, to that based upon what they're doing. We've not ever studied it frankly, to be that finite. So I think that was the original genesis of, of the resident, non-resident. I do believe, and I think it gets back to the concern or the issue that Nicholas raised, and, and really it's only within the one area. And that is with our picnic permits, that the demand for picnic permits, and I think we're going, we're seeing the demand growing back to what it used to be, is so heavy for the city, for San Mateo residents that I think that if we opened it even to folks who are within our sphere of influence, I think that we would have, um, a lot of competing people trying to get on the same date. And I think therein, I think for us is really sort of where we have always drawn the line.
Oh, that, that's, that's reasonable. I just, um, what, I just wondered about that. But yeah, and I can see where the, the one sort of bleeds into the other that people say, well, how come if, if we can register for the classes, we can't sign up for the picnic areas, et cetera? So, okay, um, that's fine. I don't, I don't really have any other questions. Does any, any other commissioner have any additional questions that they'd like to ask before we go to public comment? Okay, uh, well, in that case, uh, Giovanna, if we could, uh, open the, uh, public comment period, do you have any, uh, requests for comment?
I do not, Chair Massey.
Okay, so, uh, seeing none, I will close the public comment period and bring this back to the commission. And my understanding is that, uh, we will need to take a formal vote on this matter. So, uh, what I'd like to do is give everybody, each person an opportunity to, um, make whatever comments they'd like to make. And then we'd be looking for, um, a motion either to continue the existing policy or to, to change it, um, when everybody's had a chance to speak. So just to mix this up a bit, Commissioner, Commissioner Hall, I know we, we've heard from you before, but, uh, if you had any additional thoughts.
No more.
You're, you're, you're good? Okay. All right. That's fine. Um, Commissioner Walnick?
I guess I'm with Eric. I, I don't really see that much of a difference. I don't think there's maybe a public outcry if we, you know, go forward with the permanent policy that then we've decided doesn't work. I mean, I think everybody has the same goal of maximizing revenues and whether that's through a surcharge or whether that's through larger enrollment. I, I would expect that you'd be looking at the numbers every year and, um, that we can revisit this if necessary. So, well, I mean, I, I do agree that this year really isn't a great, um, judge of the numbers. I, I don't feel strongly one way or the other. So again, I'm with Eric. Either way, extend the policy or, um, just make it indefinite. I mean, sorry, uh, extend the, the pilot or make it indefinite. I, I think it's, it's the same in my mind.
If I could just ask you to clarify, um, are you saying that you're indifferent between extending the pilot and, uh, changing the policy indefinitely? But you're in favor of keeping the policy the way it is? Or are you saying you're indifferent between changing the policy from what to keeping the, the actual policy versus going back to, uh, the different fee, levels of fee?
Uh, I am indifferent to a pilot versus keeping no surcharge. And keeping, I think, keeping the priority registration for residents is, I'm, I'm very strongly in favor of that. I think we're only dickering between whether we're making a motion to extend the pilot or whether we're making a motion to, um, indefinitely leave out the surcharge.
Okay.
For non-residents.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, okay. Commissioner Field?
You know, after Commissioner Walnick's comments, I'm going to tell you that I actually think that the staff recommendation is the right move. You know, I think extending a pilot program, even, even given the curious circumstances that have been 2020 and unfortunately now much of 2021, I think it makes sense to adopt, um, the pilot program as it is, prioritizing residents and eliminating the non-resident surcharge. And if in a year we look back and say, you know, this isn't really working, I think the outcome is still the same, but I think it makes sense to formally adopt, um, as staff has recommended. And thanks everyone for allowing me to shift my perspective during this meeting.
We, we actually encourage that kind of thing. So, um, that, that's, that's just fine. Okay. All right, Commissioner Held?
Yeah, I think we should make the change versus extending the pilot. I think that just makes sense and is practical. And I think this does a nice job again of serving, uh, the residents and, and also making sure we protect our revenue base, which is really important. So this makes, makes sense to me. That's it.
Okay. Well, I, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I think we should be, should adopt staff recommendation. And I think we should, uh, drop the, the, the pilot, classification and just say that this is the policy going forward. I'm not, personally not convinced that, that it makes any difference whatsoever to the public. And I think it would be easier in a way for us to think about it as this is what we're going to do, uh, based on the data we have, knowing that it's, um, incomplete and under unusual circumstances, et cetera. And let this run for another year or two until we're really clear of the pandemic or at least we've come to, to terms with it, living with it, or however things are going to turn out. And then we can look at it again if, if staff thinks that that's an appropriate thing to do or one of the commissioners has the same point of view. Any additional comments from anybody before we go to a vote? Okay, I'd be looking for a motion.
I make a motion to, uh, discontinue the non-resident surcharge as recommended by staff.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, Giovanna, would, would you do a roll call vote, please?
I would be happy to, Chair Massey. Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Held?
Aye.
Commissioner Walnick?
Aye.
Commissioner Massey?
Aye.
Motion has passed. Thank you. Motion has passed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, that concludes our, um, consideration of this agenda item. We move now to reports and announcements. Does staff have anything for us?
So I have a couple. Um, one is, is that, um, I hope all the commissioners receive the invitation. For the upcoming commissioners reception on October twenty-second. And if you have not yet responded, please RSVP. Um, so they can try to get the, um, number. They have modified it from what they were hoping to do, which was more of a, um, dinner type that they've had in the past. And so now it's going to be more of a outdoor informal reception using the patio outside the Oak Room at the library. So, um, if you've not yet responded, please do so. The other, um, change that I just wanted to note, and it really is under the. Um, the list of projects that we always put in the commission packet about how we're doing on our capital improvement projects. Um, for the East Hillsdale Playground and Park Improvements, we had indicated that we were gonna send out postcards in October. And then, um, direct, uh, citizens and, and people around East Hillsdale to a, um, survey online. And after last week when we had a staff review of kind of the options that we're looking at, both in terms of the layout of. Um, the park as well as the playground options, we've decided, um, that we're going to hold a virtual meeting instead. And so rather than sending everybody, um, to just do a survey. Um, I think we decided that there's, we just want to, I think nuance it a little bit more and try to explain those changes more. So we still will be notifying the same folks around East Hillsdale, but it will be inviting them. To a virtual meeting rather than, um, just coming to a survey online. So, um, the agenda, that portion of it was already completed by the time, uh, we have that staff discussion last week. So I just wanted to note that in terms of an update.
Thank you very much for that. Do you have any sense of the timeframe for this?
I mean, we're hoping to have the virtual meeting this month in October.
Oh, okay.
Staff was, is working on the postcard notification, um, and we'll be getting it out to people with the date of the meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Anything else?
That was all I had. I'm not sure if either Bob or Nicholas had anything else.
Uh, I, I do have one thing. If you have, uh, any interest this Saturday, you've got some time on your hands from eleven to three at King Center. Uh, Dia de las Muertas, uh, will be having an event there and it should be lots of fun. So you can. Uh, bring friends, family, whoever, and, uh, and it's gonna be a great time. So I encourage you to, to show up to that.
Great. Eleven to three?
Eleven to three.
Is that gonna be the kind of Halloween, um, festival or is there?
We're up now, we're gonna do a fall festival, uh, after that. That'll be more Halloweeny. This one will be in the traditional. Uh, Dia de las Muertas sort of theme. So, um, there'll be lots of dancing and music. And there'll be activities for kids and things like that. And then we'll, we'll do more of a formal Halloween thing, which is our traditional fall event that we've done. Uh, for many years, so.
Great.
You get a double.
Yeah, both sound fun.
That sounds great. Anything from any of the other commissioners? Oh, yes, yes, I can see your hand up. Sorry, yeah.
So, one, just, um, a comment from Sheila about the virtual meeting. That, I think that's great. And I just want to make a comment. Um, the, I guess it was Public Works is. Removing a bunch of parking for a bike lane in North Central and it caused quite an uproar on Nextdoor over here in North Central. Um, and part of the problem was that at least some of the notification was a QR code on flyers, on telephone codes that require, on telephone poles that require you to. To both see the thing and then, and then actually go to the QR code. So I'd just like to, and, and that pissed a lot of people off. So I'd just like to, uh, point out that if you, I'm glad you're mailing actual postcards and, and to always think about if you have to. Have someone scan a QR code and then go get more information, we're gonna get a drop-off in people reading those types of things. Cause I know I wouldn't scan it and read it. So, uh, so just, you know, sort of share that. But then the other thing I wanted to update was. Um, I attended the city calendar, I watched the city council meeting, uh, where they, uh, reviewed the Central Park design after we approved it last month. They also were, uh, very pleased with it and greatly in favor of it and unanimously, uh, chose to go forward with it. So I was, I was encouraged by that and I'm really excited for that.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, I, I have just a couple of things. One is I'd like to, uh, have a follow-up question on that. And that is, I wasn't clear from what I read about the, the city council meeting, whether the council had. Sort of fully and finally approved the plan or whether they'd sent it back with sort of questions and suggestions. With approval being for another day.
So I think similar to the commission, I think they had some, um, some comments that were bringing back to the, um, designer. For them to determine whether or not, I think most of the changes, um, that they had suggested, I think were, um, were, would. Certainly add to the value of it. I think the one issue that I think is still out there is, at least there was one. Um, city council member who was very interested in establishing more of a splash pad. Um, a larger aquatic facility, splash pad facility in the park. Uh, you know, that one I think is going to continue to be problematic, both from, um, the cost. Um, as well as really the ongoing maintenance and, and knowing, um, how much we all know, how many kids show up at Central Park. I think to accommodate the number of kids who would end up wanting to use it, it would have to be a relatively good size. And that would really mean a trade-off from something else that was already in the design. So. We're still evaluating it. Um, there was not over, there was not overwhelming support from any of the other council members on that. So we take it as a suggestion, um, and we'll do our due diligence and then determine whether or not. Um, there really is an opportunity to add that into the design. I think the other thing is that. Um, it would take some time then to come back and redesign, um, the design that you already saw. And I think that would add more time to it. The other concern that I know the folks from RRM raised in the, in the meeting that I had afterward is. Um, again, based upon the current regulations for recirculation, it's going to require a fairly large tank. And filtration system underground. Um, and I think there's just some concern about the. Large number of trees around there, um, and whether or not we could find a place that we could ever. Build such a large underground tank, um, that would not disturb, um, any of the tree roots around there. So I think those are some considerations that we're still looking at.
Okay, so, so what is the, the way forward then with this towards the point where we are, are letting contracts and so forth?
So I think that, um, there were some comments that, um, that the commission made. I think we also indicated that. You know, we're, that, um, what you saw did not have a design for either the restroom building or the picnic shelter.
Right.
And so at the time that those were done, we would bring that back to the commission for additional review at that point, at that point.
Okay, so that's, that's, that, um, that plan hasn't been altered by the, the council.
No.
Okay, thank you. Um, the other thing is that, um. At some point, uh, and, and maybe even at the, at the next meeting. I, I at least, I, I can't speak for any other commissioner, uh, could use a briefing about the get-around program. Because it's something I, I. Didn't know very much about and, and I feel we should know more.
We'll be happy to do that. Um, that the senior commission has been actively involved in the discussions and review of that program. Um, but I do think that it is of value just to bring this commission up to date as well in terms of. Um, the service that we are, that we're providing. So, uh, we'll provide an informational update, um, at one of your upcoming meetings.
Okay, I, I don't want to get into it now, but one, one question that has like a, a, you know, very short answer possible. Is this a program for which park and rec is responsible?
Yes.
Okay. We, we, we.
Great question.
We look forward to hearing more, uh, at our next opportunity then. Okay, unless somebody has something else, um, I'll declare us adjourned. We'll see you all next month.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Night.
Night, everyone.